I would like to call to order the March 19, 2024 Meeting of the West Palm Beach Planning Board. Mr. Clerk, if you'll kindly take the roll.
Steve Mayent.
Present.
Peter Pifko. Will Corrente. Patrick Mayfield.
Here.
Deborah Raine.
Here.
Jean Marseille Jr.
Present.
Sam Fish.
Here.
May the record reflect Andres Paradello is not in attendance today.
Next order of business is approval of the February 21, 2024 minutes. Has everyone had the opportunity to review them? Are there any changes or corrections? And if not, I'm looking for a motion for approval.
Move approval.
Motion? Motion and second. Any further discussion? All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed, passes unanimously. Next on our agenda is report of the planning staff. Ms. Van.
Evening Board and Chairman. Angela Van, planning his own administrator. There's only one case actually has been approved since your last, um, planning board meeting. Uh, and that was the evaluation appraisal review or report that was done to the comprehensive plan. You heard this back in September of, uh, last year. And the commission just finally approved that on March 4th. This is a general overview in general, the proposed ER based amendment is to the city where it's managing comprehensive plan, like I just said it. And it's intended to reflect changes in the state requirements or legislation. Clarify the language and policies and ease of understanding. Combine or eliminate similar or redundant policies. Provide more accurately reflect current practices, processes, or conditions that update outdated data and reference or definition. And again, you guys heard this was back in September of last year. And finally, that's the process going through to the state and back down to the, um, to the city. That was approved unanimously by the City Commission on March 4th. And that's the only case that's been heard by the City Commission since your last planning board meeting. Happy to answer any questions.
Any questions of staff? If not, thank you. Alright, next on our agenda are remarks by the chairperson, of which I have none. Next is the declaration of ex parte communications. And let me begin by stating that as to all cases being heard this evening, I have had no ex parte communications. I have received no written communications. I have conducted no investigations. I have made no site visits. I receive no expert opinions. I request that these disclosures and all written communications be made a part of the record. Let me go next to Deborah.
As it relates to the cases proposed this evening, I have not had ex parte communications. I have not received written communications. I have not conduct, uh, conducted an investigation. I have not made a site visit. I have not received expert opinions. I request that these disclosures and all written communications be made part of the record. And any decisions I make will be based on the evidence presented this evening.
Thank you so much. Peter.
As to tonight's agenda, um, I have not had ex parte communications. I have not received written communications. I have not conducted an investigation and I have not paid a site visit. I have not received expert opinions and I request that these disclosures and all written communications be made part of the record.
Thank you so much. Will.
As to the matters on the agenda this evening, I have not had ex parte communications. I have not received written communications. I have not conducted an investigation. I have not made a site visit. I have not received expert opinions. I request that these disclosures and all written communications be made part of the record.
As to the matter of all agenda items this evening, I have not had ex parte communications. I have not received written communications. I have not conducted an investigation. I have not made a site visit and I have not received expert opinions. I request these disclosures and all written communications be made part of the record.
As to all matters on the agenda, I have not had ex parte communications. I have not received written communications. I have not conducted an investigation. I have not made a site visit. I have not received expert opinions. I request that these disclosures and all written communications be made part of the record.
Thank you. Sam.
As to all the matters on the agenda this evening, I have not had any ex parte communications. I have not had any, received any written communications. I have not conducted an investigation. I have not made any site visits and I have not received any expert opinions. I request that these disclosures and all written communication be part of the record.
Thank you. Alright, that then brings us to the swearing in of speakers. Would everyone who plans to speak or offer testimony this evening, please stand up and raise your right hand? Do you swear or affirm that the testimony you're about to give in this proceeding will be truthful? Next on our agenda are continued cases of which there are none. That then brings us to Planning Board Case Number 1837E. May we hear from the applicant?
Good evening Chairmains, members of the Board. Good evening. For the record, Roger Ramdeen with the Officer Shutsen Bow. And I'm here on behalf of the applicant and I'll present in the, I'll be presenting the project for you tonight. So tonight we have a major PD amendment. The major PD amendment is for the site located at the southeast corner of the I-95 and 45th Street. Showing on the slide. A little background about the site. This was previously approved as a commercial plan development back in November of 2020. It was approved as three pods. Pod one is the Wawa site. Pod two was for a full service hotel. And pod three was for an apartment building. So to date, both pods one and pod three are completely built out and operational. And we're here tonight to ask for your recommendation of approval on pod two for the full service hotel. What's changed since our prior approval is we've added eight stories. We've added some additional rooms. We've added some additional square footage to the restaurant. And we've added a parking garage. Overall, the site, we have maintained the connectivity for pedestrian and vehicular connections as required for a planned development. We horizontally integrated as a, we're horizontally integrated as a multiple use development. We have the residential component. We have the Wawa and convenience store component. Now we're adding the hotel component. As mentioned before, we are now proposing a 233 room hotel. We are providing ground floor restaurant space as well as a roof level restaurant space, which will be open to the public. The existing and approved and built residential is for 374 units. And everything is strategically placed for the benefit of the users of the site. Which includes the pedestrian connectivity, benches, landscaping, et cetera. We'll focus on the pod two site plan now, which is the subject of tonight's request. We did conduct a, well, Concoy Group did conduct a hotel study. And we ha, they have determined that the hotel would be located in an area with strong tourism growth. Hospitality performance. It's regionally accessible and located in an area with high job availability. And as mentioned before, we are proposing the restaurant space on the ground level and on the roof level, which is a benefits both the public as well as the patrons of the site. I'm just gonna run through a few of the elevations slide. If you have any questions as it relates to architecture, uh, we do have our full team here to answer any questions as it relates to the architecture, uh, traffic and landscaping. These elevations show the north, south, east and west facades of, of the proposed hotel. Now I'm just gonna run through a few of the renderings that we have. This is looking southwest. So basically 95 is to the back of the building and the apartment building is the black, uh, shadowed building to the left of the screen. Here we have a rendering looking northeast. So basically to the back of the building. You can see the public plaza on the bottom right of the screen. Then we have a northwest view. So basically you're almost on, uh, the canal side. And we have two renderings, photorealistic renderings. This is taken from 45th Street. It shows you the apartment building to the back, the hotel in the middle and the Wawa to the front with the canal directly butting it. And finally, this rendering is taken from I-95. Also shows the apartment, uh, parking garage and the apartment, the, um, parking garage proposed for the hotel as well as the hotel. Our request tonight does require five waivers. I'll go through these waivers individually as we go forward. But in summary, it's to reduce the site setback along the north and south property lines. It's a reduction in the building separation. A reduction in required onsite parking for the hotel. Allow the encroachment of existing light poles as well as new proposed light poles in the landscape buffer. And a reduction in number of loading zones. So the first waiver is specific to the setbacks. As you can see from this slide, it's a lot of information on here. But basically the pod is only about 198 feet wide. The hotel, uh, because of its positioning, um, and allowing for drive aisle spaces and turnaround pickup and entrance into the garage, creates a very narrow area and we have to push the building towards the southern end of the, the property line. So along the south, we have a five foot setback. And to the north, we have a 50 foot setback to the canopy. Now, the reason why there's a 95 foot setback requirement is because when you, when you go above 60 feet in height, you must provide an additional, uh, six feet for every 10 feet of increased height. So because our building is 185 feet tall, we had to provide an additional 40, uh, 45 feet of setback. So, um, that increased the setback requirement. As it relates to waiver number two, building separation, this is directly related to section 941457. And oddly enough, the code does have an allowance for a zero foot setback or 10 foot setback, nothing in between. We are providing a 2.75 foot setback at the tightest spot. So because it's either zero or greater than 10, we have to seek the waiver. And the building division and fire rescue have no issues with this building separation. Waiver number three relates to parking. In summary here, we are actually overparked on both pods three and pod one. And, and on pod one, there's a requirement for 24 spaces. We are providing 51. On pod three, which is the apartment building, we are required to provide 724. We're actually providing 762. In an effort to have the hotel pod park itself and not be so reliant on any other parking within the pods adjacent to it, we're seeking the waiver to reduce the number of required spaces from 370 to 307. And we can accomplish this because we demonstrate compliance with the waiver standards outlined in the code. Specifically section 94207B13. And it allows uses to reduce their required setback, their required parking by a maximum of 30%. We're actually only seeking a 17% reduction. And the reason for that is number one, we're overparked on the other two pods as mentioned before. But not only that, both the ITE and ULI standards require less parking than the code requires. So the, the code may have, um, some antiquated, um, requirements as it relates to the calculations required for hotel parking. The ULI and ITE standards are, are updated, if not annually, very, more frequently than the code. With the ITE calculations, a hotel of our size would only require 275 spaces. The ULI would only require 266 spaces. We are providing 307. So we're technically above the current standards. Not only are we overparked on pods one and pod three, but the code also has a, a standard that requires that there may be additional parking adjacent to the site. And directly to the east is a plaza that has parking there as well. Not that it's needed, but it is there. Waiver number four relates to light poles in the landscape buffer. Overall, there are 10 light poles within the landscape buffer. Two of which are grandfather vested because they were there prior to this proposal. So because those two are vested and because we're posing, we're proposing eight new light poles within the landscape buffer, we are required to seek this waiver. The light poles footprint that would be occupying this landscape buffer, it's about one square foot. So it's very small space impacting the landscaping within the buffer. Not only that, but we do comply with the landscaping requirements on the site. And we exceed the landscape requirements throughout the entire plan development. And finally, the, the loading zone waiver, um, which is section, relates to section 94485 letter P. For any use greater than 100,000 square feet, you are required to provide three full size 10 by 50 loading zones. Our hotel, along with the restaurant spaces, only requires one. So this was previously granted, not, the operations are not changing. And one 10 by 50 loading zone is more than sufficient for our purposes. So we are asking this waiver again, only because we are now in the threshold to provide three versus the one that we were approved for before. As it relates to the standards required to comply with for a, a major PD amendment, a major plan development amendment that is related to section 9432A, we believe that we comply with all the standards. We'd be happy to go over any of the standards if you do see, uh, if you have any questions as it relates to that. But staff does agree and, uh, we do have a staff recommendation of approval contingent on three conditions of approval. One is to limit the, uh, delivery vehicles to the pod to not have, um, 18 wheelers or semi trucks, and which we are accepting. Second is to correct a note on the site pla, on the civil plans. And thirdly is just a standard boilerplate, uh, condition for a carryover of the prior conditions from the original resolution. So none of those get lost. With that, we do respectfully request your recommendation of approval to the City Commission. And I'd be happy to answer any questions that you may have.
Alright, any questions? Will to start with you. Any questions?
I do have one question regarding one of the waivers, waiver requests with respect to the separation of the building. Uh, just out of curiosity, looking at the site plan, I mean that two foot, uh, is there a reason why the buildings not, the two buildings are not connected that would?
The reason why we did not connect the building was one, the cost associated with connecting the buildings and providing a zero foot setback. Secondly, we wanted to provide a well-ventilated parking garage. So with the space in between the buildings and the surrounding openness, it would provide a much better ventilation within the building.
I see. Thanks.
Alright. Jean?
I have a question. Sure. Um, you mentioned that on the other two pods, that I guess there's an excess amount of parking spaces.
Yes.
Will parking be shared amongst the pods or?
A, a plan development is allowed to share the parking regardless. As a plan development, we are overparked by two. But when we look at the individual calculations per use, they're still overparked. So the, let me go back to it.
But you're not going to allow hotel residents to park in the apartment's parking spaces, correct?
If, if they needed to, they can.
Okay.
Yes, if they needed to, they can. It's just that the apartment building, the, the garage would be restricted to the residents only. There's surf, there's sufficient surface parking on both pods one and pod three. So on the apartment building, I believe there are 86, uh, surface parking spaces available. So there is still overflow parking if needed, not that it would be needed. One thing I did fail to mention was the parking, the, uh, parking garage on pod two for the hotel. It's valet parked on levels two through four with self-parking on level one. And that's managed through the hotel with a valet guy that's there 24/7.
Is the, um, are all three pods currently owned by a single owner?
Currently, two of the pods are owned by a single owner. The third, the, the pod one is, is a separate owner.
Okay, so I'm assuming that they're all separately deeded, or all three separately deeded properties?
Correct.
Would there ever be a conflict if you're saying that you can share parking? Is there like an agreement to share parking between owners and?
The plan development allows for shared parking regardless. Pods one and pod three are indeed overparked and pod two with this waiver will be self-parked as well.
Okay, so there's no conflict between, if these are all separate owners?
Correct.
Okay.
Okay, Sam, any other follow-up before I move to the next one? Sam, are you done with your question? You look like you still have some follow-up.
Yeah, I'm just thinking, I mean, it, it, take the parking out. And is there any other part of the waiver process here that, um, that would be a conflict between property owners if they're separate? If there are separate property owners at one point?
A plan development allows for separate owners once it's plotted as separate lots. So that, that gives the ability to sell off each pod individually. So one owner doesn't collectively own the entire plan development. As far as conflicts with the parking, the code allows for cross-parking regardless through a, 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 a plan development.
So in other words, they can park by right? They don't need the other pods permission to park there?
But the way this particular plan development is designed, each pod stands on its own.
So I'm, I'm, I'm just trying to follow up on Sam's question. Looks like Linda wants to say something. Do you want to jump in here, Linda? We'll be hearing from you in a minute.
Linda Louis, Principal Planner. So the concept of a plan development is that it, it's a, it's an integrated development. So theoretically, parking could be shared amongst the three separate pods that are provided within the development. For this particular site, as well as the other sites, they would like to have that excess parking on their particular pod. And that's how, um, they're proceeding to go ahead with their parking. Is that they would rather meet the parking requirement as an individual pod as opposed to, um, this integrated parking. But theoretically, as a plan development, parking could be shared between those three pods.
I understand the point you made and thank you for that. But in theory, one of the owners, they may not need it, but one of the owners of the other pod could restrict the others from coming in, correct?
Not as a plan development.
So they could not?
They would have to be shared. Um, it is a plan development. It's an integrated development with cross-access. It is shared parking.
So they wouldn't need the other pod owner's permission to use that?
No.
Okay. Sam, any other questions?
I'm just looking at some of the other variances to see if there'd be any, uh, other conflicts like light poles, landscaping. Here's your setbacks.
And the loading zone.
Can you go back to the, the first few waivers?
Light poles. Building separation.
Okay.
And the setback.
Okay, that's fine.
Okay, and if you have other questions, we'll come back to you. Peter, any questions?
No questions.
Deborah?
I do have one question, or maybe I'm asking for clarification regarding the less, the 63 spaces that's been taken out. What's the justification? You know, when I look back at what's required in the zoning regulations, where you, it was the 370? And then you mentioned the 307?
Yes.
Do you just clarify that a little bit more?
So the code does allow for waivers, the, for plan developments to reduce their required parking by a maximum of 30%. Part of that is to satisfy three of five standards that's in the code. Of the five standards, we believe that we meet four of them. The four that we meet would be integration of the plan development, which is what we have within the plan development. The waiver can't be more than 30%. We're only asking for 17%. Number three is to demonstrate that we, um, um, have, uh, and I forget how the language reads. I don't know if I have it on the screen here. Which, we showed that the ULI and ITE requirements are less than required per code. So we have demonstrated that both ULI and ITE standards require less parking than the code does. And I thought there was one more. Oh, other parking facilities are available within 300 feet of the site. So to the east, there's a part, there's a public, a, a strip mall with additional parking there as well. That doesn't even take into account the excess parking that's on pods one and pod three.
You know, Deborah, we've had this issue come up several times where the, at least from what staff has, has explained to us that our parking requirements are probably too high. You know, as the uses have changed and other institutions have been lowering what they have recommended to other groups. And I think we're, I think, I don't want to put words in my mouth, but I remember one time you were talking, we may be revising our parking things to reduce it. You know, to reflect change patterns and things too. So we've dealt with this four or five times at least. But I understand your concern. When I first heard it, I thought, how could you give up parking? But I, I understand it. Any other questions before we bring staff up?
For me, just, you know, normally I am the parking hawk.
I know that.
But with a hotel, most people are gonna be brought in from the airport or other destinations. It's not gonna have the, um, the same need as the, the apartment complex has. And it's great to see that the apartment complex has an excess of parking, so.
Fair point. Alright, thank you so much, sir. Can we hear from staff?
Good evening, Linda Louis, Principal Planner for the record. So just to quickly summarize, this is a major plan development amendment to the Palm Beach Riverstone Commercial Plan Development, or CPD. The major amendment only affects pod two of the plan development, which is the center parcel of the three parcels located within the plan development. Pod two is comprised of approximately 1.6 acres and it's currently approved for an eight-story, 150-room hotel building with approximately 1,200 square feet of ground level restaurant use. Surface parking is also approved on pod two and it's located on the west side of the parcel. So as provided in the staff report, the applicant is requesting a major amendment to pod two of the CPD. The approved use of, um, on pod two as a hotel will remain. However, the applicant is seeking to increase the hotel room count from 150 keys to 233 keys. So that's an increase in 83 rooms. So adding the rooms will also increase the height of the building from eight stories to 16 stories. The amendment will also provide for a four-story parking garage structure, as the applicant had mentioned. And, um, as part of the major amendment, the applicant is seeking a total of five waivers from the requirements of the zoning and land development regulations to accommodate the proposed changes. So these are the images that the applicant has presented. This is pod two in relationship to the overall pods or adjacent pods within the plan development. And this is the rendering of the proposed hotel building as well as the garage structure driving north on the 95. So this, uh, slide summarizes the major changes between the current approved as well as the proposed amendment to the site plan and hotel building on pod two, which is also detailed in the staff report. In a nutshell, the major changes to the site includes, uh, the increase in the height of the building by approximately 85 feet or eight stories. As mentioned, uh, the increase in the number of hotel rooms. The addition of approximately 6,500 square feet of restaurant use. And the addition of 225 parking spaces provided on pod two with a proposed parking garage structure. These plans below show a comparison of the current approved as well as the proposed site plan. It's important to note that the amendment will not impact the adjacent pods within the plan development. As you can see in the slide, the slot, or the images here, the pedestrian cross-access points as well as the vehicular cross-access points are in the same general area. However, the only slight modification is to the pedestrian areas and that is to accommodate ADA accessibility as well as to provide additional enhancements to the pedestrian areas within the pod. Another thing that I also wanted to make note is that even though the addition of the proposed four-story parking garage takes up a significant amount of open space from the currently approved site plan, the proposed amendment does still meet the open space and landscaping requirements of our zoning and land development regulations. Regarding the requested waivers, as noted in the staff report and the applicant's presentation, the applicant is seeking a total of five waivers to accommodate the amendment. As noted in the staff report, which is analyzed in detail within the staff report, staff supports all five waiver requests. So to conclude staff's presentation, staff is recommending approval of planning board case number eighteen thirty-seven E, Z twenty-two, zero six, zero, zero, thirty-two, with the conditions provided in the staff report. Staff has found that the proposed amendment is consistent with the amendment's standards and that's section ninety-four, thirty-two of the zoning and land development regulations and therefore staff is recommending approval. And that concludes staff's presentation.
Any questions? Let me start with you, Deborah, staff? Peter?
Nope.
Pat?
Nope.
Gene? Sam? Okay. Well, I don't know if there's anyone from the public who's not part of this team, but if someone from the public wishes to be heard, we would invite them to do so now. And if not, we'll bring them back to the board for discussion. Does anyone have any issues with this? Like to discuss? I would say one thing. We really have needed more hotel space. You know, one of the reasons the convention center is unable to attract the size conventions they want of an absence of nearby hotel rooms. So we've been, that's why it's been such a priority for the city and we give an incentive for more hotel space. So I think it's a good thing for what the city needs. And any other discussion, please jump in.
Well, no, you remember what was there, right? It was the Knights Inn for the longest time.
So we lost a little hotel.
You know? And, and I do like that they're increasing the restaurant space because that apartment building is kind of in the middle of nowhere. So it's great. Like if I was living there, I would want, you know, other than the Cracker Barrel, something in proximity to the neighborhood, right? So.
All right, if there's no other further discussion, I'm looking for a motion for approval.
I have one quick question.
Oh, go ahead.
I saw in the, one of the renderings had, is it a Hyatt place? Is that an actual confirmed brand that's going to operate there and? Yeah, okay.
Because we know the, he's concerned about other Knights Inn, I think is what he's worried about. All right. I'm looking for a motion.
Motion? I think I could read it.
I move that the planning board recommend to the city commission approval of planning board case number one-eight-three-seven E, Z two-two, zero six, zero, zero, three-two. It's like an I chart. A request by Harvey E. Oyer III of Shuts and Bowen LLP on behalf of Paradise Riverwalk LLC for a major amendment to the Palm Beach Riverstone Commercial Plan Development, CPD, generally located at the southeast corner of Forty-Fifth Street and Interstate ninety-five to increase the number of hotel rooms from one-hundred-and-fifty to two-hundred-and-thirty-three rooms and to provide for the construction of a four-story parking garage and associated site improvements to previously, to the previously approved hotel site plan on pod two of the CPD. The recommendation of approval includes the waivers specified in the staff report. The motion is based upon the testimony presented at the hearing along with the application submitted and the staff report, which constitutes competent substantial evidence. The planning board hereby makes finding of fact that the application complies with the required standards of section ninety-four dash thirty-two of the City of West Palm Beach Zoning and Land Development Regulations. In addition, the recommendation is based, is made subject to the conditions of approval contained in the staff report dated March nineteenth, twenty twenty-four. I move that these conditions are necessary to ensure compliance with the purpose and intent of the zoning and land development regulations and consistency with the comprehensive plan of the City of West Palm Beach.
We have a motion, have we a second?
No, second.
Motion and second. Any further discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Passes unanimously. Thank you. That then brings us to any new code revision cases of which there are none. That brings us to other business, unfinished business, new business. Angela, anything? We stand adjourned. Thank you.